Hey, Brother Steve here from Hollywood, California. I'm so glad you joined me today. I've been waiting for this day for a long time. Oh wait, you know, there's only one Mother Jones in the Church of God in Christ. You see, there's hundreds of Mother Joneses. Let me tell you, hundreds of them. You know, that's like saying, is anybody here named John in an arena? There's hundreds of Mother Jones, but there's only one Mother Sandra Jones in the Church of God in Christ. And you know what? We're gonna see her tonight like we've never seen her before. That's right. She at home. That's why she ain't had no booth, had no table, had no conference table. She ain't on a scooter or anything. She is at home and she's gonna join us live tonight on our broadcast. She is one of what we call the trustees of the National Board of Trustees, one of the legendary trustees of the Church of God and Trustee Board. So if you're watching right now, Mother Jones has something to say. She's gonna reveal some things that you didn't know and much, much more. Because guess what? Tonight, it's Friday night. It's all about the Joneses. It's a doubleheader. Brother Steve from Hollywood, California. Before we continue our broadcast, I want to share with you, don't forget to go to coachingfamilylife.com. If you're not a member, go to coachingfamilylife.com and get some free stuff. What are you talking about, Steve? Well, we've got some cellphone sanitizer kits that you can put your cellphone in this container and it sanitizes your cellphone. If you need help with prescription, like these prescription drugs are too expensive, we got some free prescription cards for you. I got a hundred of those I'm gonna give out. And if you'd like to go out to eat, now they just opened up the restaurants in California two days ago that we can dine outside, not in yet, outside. We'd like to go eat at restaurants. Well, today, because of Mother Sandra Jones, I'm gonna give out a $300 restaurant certificate, you know, worth $300. But what we gonna do to make it even gooder? That's what I'm gonna do to make it gooder. Okay, that's my word. Make it gooder, I'm gonna give out a hundred of them, okay? So for the next 100 people, okay, for the next 96 people that go to coachingfamilylife.com, go claim your gift, okay? 92 for the next 92 people that go to coachingfamilylife.com, go there and claim your gifts. Enjoy yourselves and you're gonna find something else there that I didn't tell you about. It's just gonna be a blessing. Go to coachingfamilylife.com and get your stuff right now. Elder Cameron Eads, hope I pronounced it right. Oh, the Cameron Eads. And his wonderful, wonderful wife, the supermodel wife. She ready. She got the glasses on, got the hair. You know, they was getting dressed about an hour ago. Did you get the lady? Did you get the lady? I got the lady. How y'all doing? Got the Eads. How y'all doing?
We doing great, Brother Steve. How are you?
I'm good. So what part of the country y'all in?
We're currently in Dallas, Texas, originally from Flint, Michigan, but we currently live in Dallas, Texas.
How you like Dallas? I love Dallas.
It's wonderful.
One of my places. I ain't gonna lie. I go to, I fly back and forth between Dallas and LA all the time, but it ain't LA now. Let's get that straight. It ain't LA.
Ain't nothing like, ain't nothing like Dallas Fort Worth there, you know, Brother Steve?
I asked you all that. I just said Dallas, down there, you know that. Now, I stay in Arlington when I come. That's my spot. See, you know, I know I'm talking about, I stay in Arlington, right around the corner. That's right, right around the corner from the arena.
Yes, sir.
And I go to, as a matter of fact, I go to the arena all the time.
Oh, yeah.
All the time. I go to, I love that spot and I ain't gonna tell you where I stay. Y'all be trying to stay up in there and that ain't gonna happen. The Dallas and everybody out there in Dallas watches right now, God bless you so much. And you know, I'm very excited. Matter of fact, this week, I finished my eighth movie this week.
Wow, Brother Steve, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And then when I got done watching, I took it back to the little DVD thing. Got that now. Was it Sandra Jones tonight? Let me let you introduce this wonderful woman. Now, she's one of the few people I could talk about for literally hours because let me just say integrity, kindness, and she gonna tell you like it is. Either you gonna buy the book or you gonna got the line. A great mother. Mother Jones, there's only one Mother Sandra Jones and she's gonna tell you the facts. And she's just an encouragement and a person who lifts me up and I just enjoy Mother Sandra. But I'm gonna let you introduce it and tell us a little bit about Mother Sandra Jones.
Thank you, Brother Steve. We appreciate you. You're doing such a wonderful job. The Church of God in Christ is just blessed to have you a part in what you're doing for all the candidates is wonderful. But we are here tonight and we're so happy that so many are watching us on tonight and we're encouraging them to share and to like, to tag, do what you have to do and let them know that we're on them tonight. And we have our candidate, Mother Sandra Jones and my beautiful wife. She's gonna tell you a little bit about her godmother today.
Amen.
My mother, Mother Sandra Jones, as you say, there's so much that I can't say about her, but I wanted to highlight some of the things that may not be known about her that is not on her campaign flyers. As much of a leader in a role that she plays within the Church of God in Christ, she is that and much, much more within the community that she lives in Flint, Michigan. She's not just a candidate that works in the national. She is that in her local and her community. She is definitely a community leader of Flint, Michigan. She is actually the CEO of the Roger L. Jones Community Outreach Center there in Flint and they actually serve over 5,000 residents weekly with food and water. So I just want to highlight that. I had opportunity to actually work hand in hand with her as an administrator there for a year or so. And it's so amazing to see an individual work in different aspects of national and it's good to see them actually do that work in their community. They take it home with them. So I just wanted to let that be known too. She's a worker in the community and well-known. She has spoken on multiple platforms advocating for those residents of Flint, Michigan.
We're so happy on tonight to be able to introduce and be able to offer up our candidate. As my wife says, she is not just someone who works in the church, but she works in her community. And she is the best person that we believe to be on the Board of Trustees. So not only to work for the church, but to be able to handle the fiscal affairs of our church, the national properties. And we are so happy that we have Mother Jones and we are asking for her reelection to the Board of Trustees, Brother Steve.
Well, let me ask you this before we go to Mother Jones. Tell me something about Mother Jones you think the people really don't know. Let's talk about that real quick.
I'll go first. Mother Jones, first of all, she is a mother and she is a teacher. She's a woman of wisdom and this may be something everyone knows, but I know personally that Mother Jones is a woman of great wisdom. She will get you together.
Right there, Doc. Will get you together on the spot. How about that?
That's right.
And he'll pray for you and then feed you.
That's right.
All in one. You get taught about yourself, you get prayer and you get fed.
And she's a mother. She's our kids' grandmother. She loves them. She always takes care of us. And so it's so much, it's so much more than just seeing her on the platform, seeing her in coaching stores. She's a great woman of God and she's a prayer ward.
Yes, she is. She is. All right. Well, you know what? I'll let you introduce her one more time.
Go ahead, Shigga. I'll let you do it.
We're gonna present to you Mother Sandra Jones. She is my mother and a whole lot of mothers to everybody. I thank God for her and the life that she led. She was a perfect example of what most women should strive for spiritually and in the national church.
And our candidate for the Board of Trustees.
Mother Sandra Jones, welcome to our program. How you doing? Mother Jones, don't do that. Don't do that. Don't, don't, don't start like, look like you about to cry and be humbles and stuff. Mother Jones, we so glad to have you.
Thank you. I am just humbled. You know, it's so easy for me, Brother Steve, to talk about other people.
Yes, ma'am.
And I noticed yesterday, well, the other day really, when I was trying to get my video for the General Council of Pastors and Elders, and you know, as much as I talk, you would think that I could have made it in one take.
Yes.
Well, that wasn't the case. I think we had to take it about
Yes.
five or six times because it's hard
Yes.
for me to talk about me, you know, and I just do. I'm a doer. And so it's really hard for me to tell you what I do. I just, it's just natural. You understand what I'm saying? You do because it's the right thing to do or you do because yours, it's your assignment to do it. You don't do it because you want somebody to notice that you've done it. So when you get ready to talk about it, it's really hard for me. It just doesn't come natural, not at all.
Well, you know.
I can talk about you and your great works and I can talk about you and working with you when I was on the publishing board and how we pulled together commercials
Yes, ma'am.
during the holy convocations and all of the different conventions that we've had. And sometimes how Robert Coben would come back and tell us, you gotta cut it down. It's too long. You know, I can, I can talk about those kinds of things, but just to say to you what I've done, it's just not who I am, you know?
Let me, I'm gonna do something different today. I'm gonna open the comments right now early. Because, and for those of you who are watching the replay, you can still send Mother Jones a message, send her a hello. And then, and because of Mother Jones, this is Friday night, this is double-headed Jones night. We want you to go to coachingfamilylife.com. I see people already trying to get some of that stuff and they getting it. Get those sanitizer. I know you all do. I know you.
I want one too.
Mother Jones, we gonna take care of you, Mother. See, that's not Mother Jones. She can just tell me, this is why I won't.
That's right.
With a straight face, you know what I'm saying? And you know, the people are commenting right now. There's Sister Lisa Jackson.
Oh, that's my favorite. I love her to death.
They said, we love you. Hold on, hold on. I thought I was your favorite.
You are. But you see, but you see, you are my favorite in what you do.
Okay, Mother Jones, she just cleaned that up real nice again. You know, and I'm gonna use that. I'm gonna use that.
And then that is my daughter, see? So, and then Cameron, my son, and her children are my grandbabies.
All right. Well, we gonna get, well, you know, since Mother Jones don't like talking about herself, we gonna talk about Mother Jones and talk with Mother Jones, but I want y'all to just take a look at this.
People start lining up before dawn. They're here for water. Some people have forgotten about Flint, but Nestle Waters never did. Three years later, they're still providing spring water, 100,000 bottles of wheat, completely free. In Flint, we haven't given up because we have friends like Nestle Waters.
I mean, the work speaks for itself. It's simple. It's plain. It don't get no gooder than that. It's, you do the work, Mother Jones, just like you do with the Roger L. Jones Foundation and the organization and everything else that you do. You do, you do the work and it's your passion. I'm gonna let Elder Eads stay in the waiting room. We'll be right back with y'all in just a moment. But Mother Jones, you get the work done and that's what being on the trustee board is about. I was speaking to one of your colleagues the other night and she was sharing, it ain't a glorious job where you get to sell the Brazilian and grin and smile. You got to romp your sleeves. And I've seen you time and time again, carry boxes, unload in the truck, packing up stuff. You had your high heels on at the booth and when the booth closed, you had your sneakers on and you get the work. And then you go to a trustee meeting and then come back.
I didn't just jump on it and decide, I wanna run for the trustee board. I wanted to be able to make a difference. So I prayed about it until I got a release in my spirit. And what the Lord said to me is, your work is not finished. And so what he meant by that is we started our committee, I'm the chairman of the Capital Asset Management. We call it the CAM Committee. And on my committee is Bishop Dr. Joseph Chase, who handles the rental properties and so forth for our committee. And then Pastor Christopher Martin, who handles the contracts. I'm not one of those persons who was afraid to talk about the people who work with me. I'm not afraid to mention their names because they are a part of what I do. I could not do it without them, just like it doesn't bother me to be able to say that the executive board and my chairman, Bishop Walls, recommended me, see, the first time. And I was just like taken back that he would think so much of me to even put me in this position. But we have begun to try to renovate downtown Memphis. And especially now with us going back to Memphis. And the Lord had given me to look at the work that our presiding bishop had done. And as you look around the various campuses, you see a lot of names, but the one name you didn't see was Bishop Charles E. Blake. So the Lord gave me to talk to the trustee board about renaming the old Russell Hardware Store downtown, which is our largest building downtown.
Wow.
To name it the Blake Building, 316 South Main, Blake Building. We brought it before the general board and it was approved unanimously. And then we brought it before the general assembly and it was approved unanimously. We began restoration of the building and this year was our year to actually start selling the condos because there will be seven condos in that facility. And then on the top floor, we'll be able to lease out all of the space. The reason I say that to you, Steve, is because we have got to think of new and invent of ways to bring revenue into this church. We cannot continue to just look at credential reports and offerings. People just don't have them. And with my marketing background, I retired from AT&amp;T and I was a major's national account manager. I traveled all over the country for AT&amp;T. And sometimes you wonder, when you're in the secular world and you retire, what am I gonna do? Well, God gave me the Church of God in Christ to be able to bring those skills with me and apply them in the church. And so we have got to be able to take what we have and renovate what we have to try to bring revenue into our church without putting such a burden on the membership.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense.
And so we have a lot of various avenues and we have an excellent board who feels the same way that I feel. Now, I want to say something.
Yes, ma'am.
Our board is like a family. It was, matter of fact, it was a young man today said to me, he said, Mother Jones, you don't hear a lot about what goes on in the trustee board meetings. Why is that? And I said, well, you know, my mama taught me, whatever happens at home stays at home. You may not agree with everything that goes on and you deal with it on the inside, but when you walk out that door, you better walk out that door as a family. And you don't bring everybody in. You solve your problems, however it is that you have to do to get it solved. But it has to be in the best interest of the church. So that's who I am. I believe in family. I believe in unity. Not, I don't mean, I'm not gonna tell you, but I think. Because I am. But once I tell you and we deal with it, you won't hear it anymore. I move on. I move on.
I ain't gonna lie. You showed me move on. The saints, I love you from all across the country. They're sending comments right now. They're reaching out to, Sister Doretha LaFlore from West Angeles Church of God in Christ, right here in Los Angeles, California. The brain herself, Shelby Francis Brewer is out there watching right now. Still coming. I need everybody right now, if you're watching this broadcast, to share to just two people that way they can know Mother Sandra Jones is live on the air. Dedication for the Blake Building was amazing. The people are, they're just commenting you because the people that love you and they love who you are. Mother Jones, what do you bring to the Board of Trustees for those new delegates that may not know a Mother Jones? And how long you've been circling the trustee board, Mother Jones?
This would be my third term.
Third term.
And I want to, I want to be able to complete what we have begun. We have property in the downtown area, for instance, like the old Russell Hardware Store. It had sat there 40 years. Forty years. Forty years. And so I was able then with our committee, we got in it and pushed forged together. We have leased out, when I came on the board, a lot of the properties had not been leased out. And so for whatever the reasons were, you know, that's immaterial. But those that were, they were leasing them out for like $900 a month, $700 a month. We're now getting $2,500 a month and $3,500 a month for our properties. And so what I bring to the board, I want to bring completion. I want to be able to finish the work that I have begun with my committee. That's what I want to do. And then after that, I really want to see young people come alongside. I'm 73 years old. I don't plan on sitting there forever. That's not my objective. What I'd like to do is finish the work that God has given me to do and bring it to fruition so that I can see the glory of Memphis downtown for the Church of God in Christ. Have, and like I have, like I said, we've got Pastor Martin, he's young.
Yes.
Saying, he's working on that committee. He could step right in, take it to the next level. You know, I just believe that God places us in certain places. It doesn't mean that you have to be the finisher of everything. It means that you may have the vision. And so the Lord has given me the vision. And so I need to be able to take that vision that where someone else then can pick it up and take it to the next level.
Mother Jones, I'm gonna ask you a question. I've asked not one person at all. I'm gonna ask you this question and I know you can handle it. Some questions you don't ask everybody because they may not be able to handle the answer. Mother Jones, for those people who may have ran a race or a campaign and did not make it the first time,
Right.
but they waited and ran the second time and they made it. What word of encouragement would you give to those who, I know a lot of people are saying, oh, we, you know, the trustee, oh, we gotta talk about the new people coming up, but yet preserve
Absolutely.
things in saints. Let's talk about that, Mother Jones. You are seasoned and you don't look 73. I mean, I'm like, Jesus, I, you still look 63, Mother. I don't know.
I love it. The God is just good to me.
I'm gonna say, I don't know what you're drinking in Flint, but I know your water. About no Mother Jones drinking Nestle water, okay? And she eating a Nestle candy bar too, so.
Absolutely. The Bible says, "They that wait upon the Lord."
Yes, ma'am.
He shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings as eagles. They shall run and not be weary. They shall walk and not faint. That's my message to those who may not make it, but this is what I say. It doesn't mean that you won't make it in the future. It just means that God may have something else right now that he is prepping you to do or something that needs your attention. You may not know it right now, but then tomorrow, tomorrow, that thing will hit and you will understand why you could not have this particular commitment. Because being on the trustee board is a commitment. Sometimes we're in meetings for hours.
Yeah, I know.
And they have to bring in lunch or breakfast. We start out in the morning and we're all looking for coffee or something and it's no money for coffee. I just want everybody to know that. There's no money for breakfast, so you better bring your own or have some breakfast for you. But the point I'm saying, I don't want them to be discouraged, you see? Because timing is everything, but you've gotta be in the will of God. What I'm seeing today, more than ever, we want to place positions above the Lord. Now, I'm married to Bishop Roger Jones.
Yes.
And as a bishop's wife, before I ever sat on that platform up there, there's a section on the floor for the bishop's wives. And when they would have, oh, I was sitting up there. I thought I was looking all right, you know? But when altar call came, I pulled that hat off, I got down on that floor and I worked that altar.
Yes, ma'am.
See, that's what's important. Yes, I want to be reelected to complete my assignment. This was assignment given to me by God, but I don't let nothing get in the way of the Holy Ghost. I don't let nothing get in the way of me speaking truth to power. I don't let nothing get in the way with me stopping and saying, Brother Steve, hold on a second. The Lord said to talk to you about such and such and such.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I pray with you? You understand what I'm saying? Sometimes people just come in and I'll see them and I'll stop and I'll pray with them. So I don't want anybody to be discouraged because you may not have made it this time. It's just that it's not your time. God has another assignment for you. And I think we all have assignments. The problem is, it may not be the assignment you want. You're seeking for one thing and God has said, uh, 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 not now. I got you. But he says, "They that wait upon the Lord, he shall renew their strength." Not you, but he shall renew their strength. They shall mount up with wings. Hallelujah, as eagles. They shall run. That means you're running for the Lord. You're running to do his work. They shall run and not get weary. Meaning whatever you put on me, Lord, I got it. Whatever you want me to do, God, I got it. They shall run and not get weary. They shall walk. Because after you get through running, you gotta slow that pace down, let that heart kind of, you know, rest a little bit.
Yes.
You know? And then he said, "And not get weary and they shall not faint."
Faint.
Don't faint and don't let your good be evil spoken of because you're so caught up in this thing. Let me say, let me tell you where I am.
Okay.
Yes, I want to be on the board, but at the same time, I want to be in the will of God. And I did not fill that application out until I heard from God the first time, the first time I ran. And I cried pinky because I could see my father's face. My brother is dead. My youngest brother is not where he could do this. And at the time, my youngest sister Kathy was raising her child and trying to get her degrees. So she's a principal and all of that, you know? And so I could just see my father talking to me, smiling at me, and it made me so proud because I was his daughter.
Yeah.
Worked in his church. He loved church more than he loved life.
Yeah, yeah.
And I could just feel his spirit. And I could just feel his spirit on me. And so I, I don't mean to cry, but you know.
It's real. It's, it, it, it's, it's true passion.
Yeah, because my, my dad, um. He loved the church. And if I had been a boy, you know what I'm saying?
I know.
If I had been a boy, then it would have been a whole different situation, but for my father. To leave this to his two daughters, my sister Kathy. You understand? Then it's up to us to carry the word. So I'm saying to those of who's listening to me tonight. I'm gonna love you whether you vote for me or not, because I'm in the will of God. And if it's God's will, it will happen. And he will allow me to complete the task that I have been set to do. And I want to complete that Blake building. I want all of those properties downtown leased out. I want us to renovate and when they walk down there, they can say, this is Coach. Other than just the bookstore. You know what I'm saying? This is coaching. I want us to work with, uh, we're working with Bishop, uh, Vincent Matthews. In Lexington. And he and his team come in and they bring the young people in, in the summer months. They, um, have, have fixed up the dorms and all of that. That's ministry, guys. Have we gotten so caught up in this political environment that we have forgotten true ministry? The trustee board is about ministry. It's our job to ensure that the various departments that are ministers, you know, have those ministries. Have what they need.
Yes, ma'am.
So that they can do ministry. Ministry is not preaching. Ministry is singing about the, uh, people of God. I heard Annette say, we've, we, uh, we distribute food to five thousand people a week. Well, guess what? In addition to that. We distribute ten thousand boxes of food a week. We have a clothes closet where we feed, where we clothe about twenty-three hundred people. Come in and they make appointments even during the COVID. That's ministry. This trustee board isn't about just sitting up on the platform. I'm not at the front of the platform. I'm kind of like in the middle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It goes by succession. You see what I'm saying? So it, you, you have to want to do ministry. You gotta be willing to sit on the platform and when you see that altar down there that needs to be worked. Get up off of that platform and go down there and work that altar. That's what this is about. Yes, you do have to do the work of the, uh, the, hold the budgets and so forth and, but I'm not on the budgetary committee. But it is my responsibility, if I have a question or a situation, to bring it to the board. I don't take it somewhere else.
Right, right.
I take it to the board, to my constituents.
You know, your, 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 your sister is there. She's, I'm here with you. She's saying hello. Kathy Smith, right there. And she said, I'm here with you, Mother Jones. We don't have to. Let me just say, everybody that's watching right now, we're gonna actually talk to Bishop Roger Jones. Uh, around the top of the hour, so make sure you stay here with us or come log back in. It's gonna be Bishop Roger Jones. A really good conversation we have planned here for tonight. Dr. Linnell Perry is there watching. Said, Mother Jones has been in ministry for years. And we thank God for Dr. Linnell Perry out there watching. Mother Jones, before we bring in our co-host, Elder Eads. And his wonderful wife, let me ask you this. Where do you see the future? Of our church going? I mean, we, I mean, prior COVID, we convention, convention. Convention, report convention, report convention. Things have kind of changed now, Mother Jones. And you know, I know the, the trustee board. And first of all, along our great presiding bishop, Bishop Charles E. Blake. But the trustee board had to comfortably cut the budget from ten million down to five. But no employees had to be laid off. Of the campuses was continued. That says a lot. Now, that's a lot of work.
Because the elected officers took the cut. We took the cut. And not a one of us complained. Not one of the trustee board members. I don't know, um, those of you who know me know I don't get into people's business. So I don't, I don't know what their financial statuses are, but not a one of them complained. We were told this is what it's gonna be. And we said, all right, and we went right ahead. And continued to conduct the business of the church for twenty twenty-two. You see what I'm saying? So you, so you have to do, where, where do I see it going? It's an excellent question. I think God is trying to get our attention. Uh, the church world, period. Not just coaching, but the church world. I think he's trying to get our attention. And if we were to actually look at what has been going on these past four years. The church has to become the Underground Railroad.
Come on, Mother Jones.
We have got to get back to fasting and praying. Mother Lewis has prayer every single week. A lot of the supervisors, uh, across the country, a lot of the bishops are having prayer. Uh, a lot of general board members are having prayer. And so that's what we've, God is trying to push us back to prayer. And all of this other stuff is fine because you gotta have it. You know what I'm saying? If I don't go to work, I can't eat. If I don't go to work, I can't pay my bills. So we've got to have it. However, what we must do. Is understand that people come first. You understand? We have, we've forgotten. When we get up and, uh-uh, and take up an offering, an hour and a half, and we have thirty minutes for prayer. Or fifteen minutes for prayer. Don't you, don't write me out. But all I'm saying is God is trying to take us back there.
Yes, yes.
And I'm not just talking about coaching. I'm talking about the Christian world, pit world. Period. We had, we have become too secular. And we've got to get back to holiness. And you say, well, you'll say that, that's easy for you to say, you're seventy-three years old. Yeah, but I'm not gonna tell you. I've been saved for seventy-three years. I'd be lying to you. I was young too, had my fun. I did everything that young people did back in the sixties, you know? We, well, we didn't drink and smoke because we were coaching. That's not what we did. But we had, we had our fun. I mean, I, I talked to Bishop Wilson and all of them about us used to be on the yard. We called, we called the yard the front part of Mason Temple. We couldn't wait, we couldn't wait to get there to fellowship. We could not wait to see one another and laugh and talk. And we used to go down in the basement of Mason Temple. And we thought we were really doing it then because we got to mingle with the Bishop Brewers and, and Bishop, uh, Chandler Owens and Bishop, uh, Porter and them. They'd be all down in there with my dad and stuff, you know? So we really, we were doing it when they would talk to us. That's, that's, that's the kind of fun we had. So what we now today. Who is create a fun for this generation where they want to come to church. I'm not talking about parties and stuff. I'm saying we've got to make holiness not so heavy. But make holiness who you are, becomes a part of you. It's, it's fun. It's what you want to be. Why? Not because you're looking for a position, not because you're looking for a title, but because you just want to be with the saints. I'm gonna make a sense, Brother Steve.
Yes, ma'am, Mother Jones. Yes, you are.
So, uh, if I had anything to say for the young people today. I would say, seek ye first the kingdom of heaven. And his righteousness. And then all of these other things. Did you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Other things will be added unto you. Now that's what the Bible says. Listen, I loved being, I loved that publishing board. Let me tell you why. It's the word of God so that, that, that we are responsible for, for putting into the hearts of people. You, you, you see what I'm saying? By word have I hidden in my heart. That I might not sin against thee. So I'm gonna ask everybody, let's get the word in our hearts. Let's get the word into these young people. Let's get the word into these babies. Let's get the word of God where it's circulating. When it comes out of your mouth, let positivity come out, not negativity. Be positive. You know, uh, Bishop Jones said, he said, girl, is it anything you can't do? And it's like, yeah, a bunch. But what it is, is I seek to find a positive way to get it done. We're waiting on the Blake building. We know there are some obstacles there legally that we've got to try to work out. Why? Because we're nonprofit. Right? So the Blake building is gonna be a for-profit. We know we gotta do that, but instead of me just giving up and said, oh, well, I'm not gonna do it. We gonna do it, even if I'm not on the board. I'm gonna work with whomever it is to try to help to bring it to fruition.
Mother Jones, before we end our broadcast, cause we've got Bishop Jones, your husband coming up at the top of the hour, I know. I know we can't ask him, maybe he can poke his head in the camera if he's close by, but you know, I, I, I know. See, that's how you do it. That's how you do it in the coaching household.
It really is, isn't it? Of my space. Look at him. That's. He's so respectful of my space that, um, you know.
And Mother Jones, we're gonna ask Bishop to stick his head in the camera because people, Mother Jones, the people are coming that your hair is fabulous. There's the bishop.
Fantastic. Looking forward to talking with you.
Amen. We gonna talk, Mother Jones, stop, Mother Jones. This is a family program. Hold it right now.
He's family though.
Those, you know, you do so much. You know, you do so much and you, you, with the nonprofits and we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna tell you upfront. We're gonna bring you back on in the month of March. Because people think, I can't say that on camera, but let me just say this. We're gonna bring you back on in the month of March. Because you know too much about how to successfully. Run a nonprofit corporation and you know how to get the funds. Because I tell pastors all the time, yes, right through here, the offering pan ain't gonna cut it, ain't. But right now, but you gotta have additional source of revenue. And you know how to do it. And we're gonna talk about that on our show in March. We gonna share, but.
The name of our, the, uh, real quick, real quickly, uh, Bishop Jones is the founder. Of Greater Holy Temple Church of God in Christ here in Flint, Michigan. But let's just be honest. Bishop is, uh, eighty-three. Bishop is eighty-three, I'm seventy-three. And, and this is what the Lord gave me. This man was the first elected chairman of the board to the National Board of Trustees in nineteen sixty-eight. The first elected chair. And he worked in that capacity to nineteen ninety-five. And he founded Greater Holy Temple in nineteen sixty-three. So I know, um. My father. Founded Greater Harvest Church of God in Christ in Dallas, Texas. If they took his name off the church today. There's nothing there. And I did not want that to happen to Bishop Jones. Someone could come in to, uh, tomorrow. God forbid, and they could change the name. And call it New Greater Holy Temple. You know what I'm saying? And to, and remodel the church and move the cornerstone and, and his name and everyone else's name that's there is gone. And I wanted his name to live on. And so the Lord gave me to start the nonprofit because of the water, you know, thing. As the R.L. Jones Community Outreach Center. And today, we, we started with nothing. But nothing. And I want to tell you, churches all across the country. Sent water and donated their time. Bishop Matthews and the missions department stayed there, what, and that like a whole weekend. And, uh, I mean, so with that, we started with no money and the Church of God in Christ. Uh, gave donations, you know, to Flint, Michigan. So today, our organization is worth over half a million dollars. That's all I'm also.
In a hush, fill the room. And a red cup came on in. Mother Jones is Ice T Saints. Mother Jones. I'm gonna let Elder Eads say his final words and I'm letting you say your final words to the delegates. Out there right now. Elder, go ahead and say your final word.
Thank you again, Brother Steve, for everything. Mother Jones, we enjoyed you on tonight. Thank you for being you. And we are just soliciting all of the delegates of the Church of God in Christ. Um, that's gonna be a part of our general assembly. We have a great church. And we are asking, when you go to the ballot, that virtual ballot on February twenty-third. That you would remember the name, Mother Sandra Jones. Not just a candidate who is looking for prestige and for honor, but wants to do the work and wants to see the success. Of the Church of God in Christ. So we are soliciting your vote on February the twenty-third.
Thank you.
Mother Jones, we're gonna let you have the final word for your words to the candidates. And to the delegates.
Thank you. I want to give honor to Presiding Bishop Charles E. Blake. And General Board, and more importantly, to my own Chairman, Bishop Dwight E. Walls Senior. To our Executive Board and our Committee Chairs, who have worked beside me, put up with me. These past eight years. I'm asking you to let me complete my assignment that God has given me. I want to do it. I want to complete the work. I want to be reelected to the National Board of Trustees. It's an honor. It's not a chore. It, it's not, uh, for glory seeking. I just want to be there to be a part and to do the work that God has given me to do. I think that's important. And I think, um, you know, whatever your hands find to do, do it well. That's what my mother taught us. And I want to complete that assignment. I am saved, sanctified, filled with the Holy Ghost and that with fire. I've never wanted to be anything other than saved. Now, I told you earlier, I haven't been saved all my life. I've been a young woman, you know, and, and had trials and tribulations. And you go through and, but at the end of the day. You know who your Savior is. And you always, always have that rock to come back to. God is my rock. He is my fortress. And he says, "I will look unto the hills from whence cometh my help." "My help cometh from the Lord who made the heavens and the earth." It's my favorite scripture. And it keeps me, it keeps me grounded. So saints of God, I ask you to please reelect Mother Sandra Smith Jones. To the National Board of Trustees for the Church of God in Christ.
Well, Mother Jones, we thank you so very much. We're gonna re, get ready for the top of the hour. It's the top of the hour. We're gonna. Move on over in just a few minutes. Join us in about five minutes. And we're gonna talk to Bishop Roger Jones. Mother Jones, thanks for everything. We appreciate it.
I love you.
And thank you for all you done. I remember doing one of my lowest moments dealing with the church. When they tried to do some stuff, I called Mother Jones and she said, baby, it's gonna all work out.
Sometimes we talk too much.
Yes, ma'am.
About what we, you know what I'm saying? Sometimes you just have to, my mom told me, go to the Lord in secret. And in prayer. And don't let it look on your face like what you going through.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, that's why I want the saints to know. I don't want them to think that I'm holier than thou. I want them to know I'm holy.
Yeah, all right now.
You understand? There is a difference.
I understand, Mother Jones. All right. Y'all know that rare. Mother Jones, thank y'all so much. Mother Sandra Jones, reelect Mother Sandra Jones for the Board of Trustees. And we're gonna end our broadcast. Thank you so much. And we'll see you in just a few minutes. Stay tuned. If you're watching our broadcast, join us back in about five more minutes. Bishop Roger Jones will be joining us live right here on this same station. God bless you. Don't forget to go claim those gifts because guess what? We've got about twenty-seven more left available right now. And you want to claim them before we get our next broadcast. God bless.
Push mine to the side.
Mother Jones, I got you now.
Okay.
All right, all right. Y'all take care.